Okay, shall we call to order? Shall we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. We'll start out with the March financial report. Rich, whenever you're ready, please.
Sure. We're now three-fourths of the way through the fiscal year. We've got about three-fourths of our budgeted operating expenses, our operating revenues come in. And we've spent about sixty-six percent of our budgeted operating expenditures. So overall, we're in good shape. Couple of things to note. On our income tax receipts for February, we we had a receipt of six hundred and eighty dollars, which rang a bell with Todd. And which seemed a little low. So he's gone back to the revenue administrators and in the state, and they're going to get back to him with whether or not that's an accurate number or not. They think preliminarily, they think they overpaid us in probably in February. And so it may have been a recouping of some of the overpayment that they made to us, but we don't know for sure yet. But Todd's checking into that. That's why that number was low. The second thing of note was we got a large reimbursement from the county for our roads. So that shows a very good position for our capital expenditures on our roads. And that's it. We're in good shape.
Thank you, Rich. Are there any questions or comments? I just want to reflect on what Rich was saying, that the other area municipalities also had lower, much lower February distribution. So it's not like the town was the only one that had this happening. So if there was a, whether it's an error overpaying, whatever it is, it happened across the board, except for one municipality up north, Chevy Chase North, I think, but or View or whatever.
I think one comment I'll make is that we're only dealing here in February with sort of the the tag end of odds and ends in the formulation. This is not affecting the fundamental core of the reimbursement, which is the estimated tax payments that we get other months, but not in February. So this is, even if it stays this low, it's not that big a deal.
Right, correct.
We're still ahead of the game in terms of
The dregs are coming in slowly.
Right.
Thank you. Great. Todd, the manager's report, please.
Sure. Thanks. I'd be happy to review some of the key initiatives that staff has undertaken over the past month. 'Tis the season for budget and elections. So we prepared the proposed budget that you'll be discussing tonight, and that we discussed in a work session a little while ago. I also and just to give a schedule overview, you're scheduled to introduce an ordinance tonight to adopt the budget and tax rates with a public hearing set for the town's May 7th annual meeting. After tonight, staff will publicize the proposed budget and advertise the hearing at the annual meeting, as well as the annual meeting as part of our normal advertisement and publicizing process. We've continued preparations for the 2024 Town Council election, assisted with Bethesda Mark Park Development Project, attending biweekly calls, and most recently, a call with Montgomery Parks officials. That issue will be discussed in much further detail this evening. We assisted with reviewing state and county legislation pertaining to multifamily attainable affordable housing. Had a conversation, just a discussion with Joan Hurt, who you just heard from, who's the Executive Director of Wonders regarding enrollment trends and financial needs. We addressed complaints about the condition and safety of the Corso property, as well as about Purple Line construction. Notably on that, on that item, we've received more reports of trespassing from neighbors of Corso. And so I met with Corso officials recently, who agreed to look into a security guard or an off-duty police officer to provide physical patrols of the site. They agreed to look into increasing passive surveillance measures, including cameras, and making improvements to the perimeter fencing to prevent further incidents of trespassing. We also had an issue with police training on the site, using blank guns or dummy guns, which are without live ammunition. Corso wasn't aware that they, of course, I was aware and had given them permission to use the site for training, but wasn't aware that these blank guns were going to be used. The town actually wasn't aware of any of that. So I reached out to Corso and MCPD. And I got a good response from the Police Department, who's agreed to notify the town of any activities that will cause a noise disturbance, especially if they involve firearm or gunfire noise, I should say. And we will in turn notify residents around Corso of those training exercises. Staff may continue to address maintenance issues with the Law and Center grounds, Leland Park, and SHA roadways surrounding the town. We are on track to make Zimmerman Park improvements per the council's decisions at the last meeting for Phase 1 improvements and Coquelin Run stabilization this summer. We continue to work with the towns engineer on plans for stormwater management on Leland and Woodbine Streets. As I reported previously, the county has agreed to provide the town with a quarter million dollars towards the stormwater management improvements on Leland Street. And we're waiting for their county attorney, I should say, to to review the MOU that we provided to them for those cost-sharing arrangements whereby the town would be responsible for engineering costs and the county would be responsible, and has agreed to provide half a million dollars towards construction costs. Dave primarily has coordinated with the Public Services Committee on several proposed traffic safety and intersection improvement projects, notably at Lee Island East. Staff also reached, searched urban planning consultants to assist the town with building code review. If such a need arises, if and when such a need arises. We began to prepare the annual ARPA project and expenditure report, attended state procurement training, planned for summer asphalt and concrete repairs, and provided project support project support to town committees. We have the answer. Any questions you have?
Thank you, Todd. Do you guys have any questions at all? Rich, any questions? Thank you. That's, oh, no, okay. Appreciate that. So we'll now open up for any public comments. There are two public hearings this evening. So if anyone wants to make a statement about anything else other than what's up for the public hearings, feel free to come to the podium or turn off your mute if you're online. Okay, seeing none, hearing none. That closes public comments. So now we'll go into public hearings. I will say we are running a little bit ahead of schedule. And for this first, I don't know if the person that is representing 6,700 East Ave. Okay, great. I didn't want to start if you weren't, if you weren't there. Great. Ron, can you introduce this? And then we will get started, please.
There it is. Okay. So the hearing will begin with the applicant's presentation. Staff has entered a report into the record. The council has had the opportunity to review that report and the materials before this hearing. So the applicants can please note that you need not restate everything that's in the application, but feel free to address what you'd like to. After that, presentation by the applicant, the council will ask its questions of the applicant. Following that, anyone else who's attending the hearing that would like to make a comment in support or opposition, or ask a question of the applicant, will have the opportunity to do so. After that, the applicant will have the opportunity for a brief rebuttal. The record will then close. The council will deliberate and entertain a motion to approve or deny the request. Please note that if the request is approved, the decision is not final until it's been written and signed by the mayor, and that usually takes about 10 days. I believe there's been one letter in support of the request that was submitted. And that's in the record as well. And with that, the applicants can please present and please state your name and address for the record, anyone who speaks for purposes of the recording. Thank you.
Testing now. Charlene Gorban. I reside at 6,700 East Avenue on the corner of East Avenue and Bradley Lane. Do I present?
If you like, yeah, just know that we read everything.
Because I haven't done this before. It's my first time. We have been in the house around seven and a half years. When we bought the house, we love the location. We can walk to Bethesda Row, and we can go and walk everywhere, close locations. We knew we were on a busy corner. However, it has gotten really busy, much busier from the last seven and a half years. The fence that's there is a fence that was remaining. It's about 22 years old. Regardless, we have to get a new fence. The wood is rotting. It's in bad shape. So it's time to replace it. So we were, and this is actually the front of the house. So our front door, as you see on the photos, facing East Avenue. So we have an unusual situation because our yard is on the side. Behind East Avenue is basically a little area. It's not even a yard. So we found out that basically our side yard is being called a front yard, which I'd like to get a little bit more detail about that, why it's called a front yard, because basically our front door is facing east. So that is something that I want to kind of get that clear today and tonight, just to find that out. This is the corner of our street. So as you see, the first photo is looking across the street to our neighbors on the other side of East and Bradley. The third photo on the right shows, that's basically a photo of our fence. And then the stop sign, as you pull out to the stop sign, you can still see right to turn. Our fence is pulled in a little bit. We've planted some bushes. You know, we've tried to do a little bit of landscaping. Unfortunately, it's, I love yard work, but it's really hard to do yard work out there when there's cars. This is a photo of the cars backing up. There's absolutely no privacy. The, the sound is loud. We're used to the sound. It doesn't bother us because in the house, we you know, can turn on like white noise machines when we sleep at night and things like that. It's just a concern of a lot of safety too. So not just privacy, but safety, that that's a concern. We have one child. He's 14 years old and on our patio, we have a little basketball area that he plays and you know, cars drive by, they blow the horn, they wave. It's like you're out there, you know, kind of, you know, no privacy, basically. The what's, can you please go back to the last photos? Okay, so this is the corner of West and Bradley. As everyone knows, Oneness is across the street. The first photo just basically shows the stop sign where you're either turning onto West or onto Bradley. The house across from Oneness, they have a fence, but they have a lot of landscape that's really tall. You know, like, I don't know how tall the tree is, 100 foot tall, maybe. But their front yard faces Bradley, but they kind of have a side fence. You know, when you look at it, their fence is not six feet tall, but their landscape is over six feet tall. So I'm looking at that. And to drive out and pull out to turn on Bradley, you still have to go out into Bradley a little bit to turn. And that's corner of West and Bradley. Can we go to the corner? There we go. Now the corner of Maple and Bradley, please. So this is the corner of Maple and Bradley. Use, the first photo is when you pull up to the stop sign on Maple, you take a right or left onto Bradley. As you can see, there are structures that are extremely high. I think they're beautiful. There's no complaints here. I just, you know, I guess I'm looking at all the neighbors down Bradley on each corner. They're getting a lot of great privacy and I'm kindly asking for privacy and security. This is the proposal, the new fence that we are getting quotes on. Many companies, if anybody needs referrals on fence quotes, I've got them. Because I've talked to a lot of people. I've done my research of what materials to use and go back, please. Sorry. To the next one, to the next one. The end of it. No, after, yeah. And I want to thank everybody. A house is made of walls and beams, and a home is made with love and dreams. And we love our house. We love the neighborhood. We're really, all of us are really blessed to live in such a great town. Not only the community, but everyone who takes amazingly good care of their homes and has love for their homes. And I am hoping to at least get us, get some privacy. So I'm open up to any questions, if anyone has questions via Zoom, or any potential feedback.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do my colleagues have any questions? Rich, do you have any questions?
No.
So just verifying, you have a four-foot fence that you want replaced with six-foot fence? And then the current screening lattice fencing will be removed?
That's going to be removed. We, we got in variance on that because when we first moved in, you would walk out and everybody, I mean, it's kind of like you're walking on stage. And so the lattice did help. But we would take that down, definitely.
Have you, this has nothing to do with the variance, but have you spoken with our town arborist about vegetative screening that could be also?
I have not, but I would definitely
Okay.
love to do that.
Give a call to the town office at some point if that's of interest to you.
Yeah, definitely.
Any questions online? Yes, Mark?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm familiar with the property and I completely see the need for the variance. I'm fully supportive of it.
Hi, Mark.
Mark, can you state for your, for the record, can you state your name and address, please?
Of course. Mark Montezemolo, Maple Avenue. Yeah, so as I was saying, definitely familiar with the property. Charlene and Marid were kind enough to host us over there. Completely see the need. Totally makes sense and fully support the variant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Of course. Oh, do you want, can you? I just want you to state your name for the record.
Let's share. Come on.
Just your name and the address, please.
Yes, my name is Mary Rayner. I live at 4409. I know the yard very well. I live about four houses down, and I used to walk my dog from my house onto East Avenue twice a day, every day, until my, until my dog passed away. I also park on East because there's no in front of the house parking on Bradley Lane. So I am pulling my car out from East and turning either West, either West or either right or left onto Bradley multiple times every day. And I also drive a lot around in the neighborhood. I would say that pulling out around Charlene's house is in fact the easiest turn anywhere onto Bradley because the visibility is the best. They very graciously, first of all, there, it's one of the very few places where there's, you know, two and a half feet between the sidewalk and, and their fence. You know, very often along, along Bradley, everything is like right to the curb and even like a wall to the curb. And there is in fact a house down close to Connecticut that has a solid, not even a sort of with airflow, but a solid wood fence that's, that's, that's right there also. So it's, it's, and what they've done at their corner, in addition to being set back from the sidewalk, is they also lobbed off the corner. So it's not, it's not a 90-degree angle. They created this triangle. So the visibility is really the best there is to turn anywhere onto Bradley. I also know that probably half the families in this town have dogs. They have a dog. You know, the yard is also important for the dog to be able to enjoy the space. And one of the things that we're really struggling with on Bradley and that should really be a topic, or we'd like to have, not just Charlene, but the whole street, we'd like to discuss at some point, is trying to calm the traffic because especially after dark, people, it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit. People are going down Bradley Lane at, at 50 miles an hour at night. You can I'm out, when I used to walk my dog, I'm out there with a flashing light trying to slow people. I've stepped into the road and tried to calm people. I mean, what's going on with the traffic is just crazy. And to be able to enjoy the space that is their primary yard, the fence would really make a huge difference.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Any, any questions?
I, I just want to make sure. Does, you're going to put the fence where the existing fence is, right? You're going to keep that setback off of the street?
Yes, correct. We, we actually, inside the fence, we have bushes and landscape planted that we're maintaining a height that's not 50 or 100 feet high. So we will definitely remove the existing fence to put the new fence in the same location if we are able to. That's what we'd like to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Colleagues, would you like to have a discussion or enter a motion?
I'll just say, I was on the council seven years ago and approved the first variance, and I'm happy to approve this one. Eminently, it makes all the sense in the world. I think when I play it back, I serve at the time, what are tea? How come they just want to put, you know, the lattice area around their patio? Why not? Right.
And I, I will add that my in-laws live at 4313, and it's the house where my husband grew up. So we are at your, near your house almost every day. Very very much in favor of your increased privacy.
Would anyone like to enter a motion?
I would like to enter a motion that we approve this variance.
Second?
Second. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. It is approved. Please wait until obviously, this is why a variance process takes place. So because it's an unusual situation compared to other lots. Feel, feel free to contact the town arborist as well. Learn about our tree planting programs, which are quite generous, and we are good. Thank you. Okay. Second public hearing we're having is referencing to amend Chapter 1, general provisions of the town code to clarify language and revise the list of county laws that apply in the town. Would anyone like to make a statement or a public comment about this ordinance change? Not hearing anything, not seeing anyone? Okay, public comments are closed. We will can enter into discussion. We can enter a motion, however, all you'll
I just like to, I forgot to check, and I don't have it in front of me, but did my comment of last time, was that addressed? About the remember that. And where was it to, in regard to, we're automatically deemed to, to still be complying with the ordinance of the county. Well, there was an expression that I was concerned with, that it was overly broad. Where's the text? I raised it the last council meeting.
The following, I, I believe if I'm not mistaken, it's on page two, Part C. The following chapters of Montgomery County Code or portions thereof, as such, may be amended, replaced, or relocated. I think you were
Replaced, that bothered me, yes.
And Ron was not in our last meeting to be able to ask him directly.
Ah, okay.
So I don't know if that question was posed, Ron, to you. There was a concern about on page, the end of Page 2 of this ordinance, that the word replaced caused some, some angst because we didn't know what it would be replaced with, that we would automatically, as a town, continue to, if you will, agree to.
Right. And we basically get to the same place if we just take the word replace out. In other words, if it's reordered or there's an amendment, then okay, but replace just in my mind seems so general and vague that it could potentially encompass something that's entirely different, which we might not otherwise be happy about.
Sure. Yeah, that's a fair point. Replace could certainly be deleted. The intent there is meant to address situations where entire chapters are replaced with new chapters on the same subject matter. But I mean, it is a fair point. You might not agree with the replacement in entirety.
And certainly And, and as we've looked at, as the committees looked at this, there were replacements that were totally different. I mean, they, it was an entirely new section that they'd replaced the old section with.
So if it, if it's different subject matter, I would not deem that a replacement as used in this paragraph. So you know, if, for example, there was a custom home warranty builder license regulation that was replaced with a custom home builder registration provision, I would deem that a replacement, replacement of the same subject. But if it's, you know, obscene matter being replaced by sanitation, then that's, that's not a replacement. But, you know, I can see for, in the first example, you know, we might like the licensing provisions, but we not, we might not like the replacement registration provisions. And so we might want to review those before deciding they're applicable, you know, if that's Barney's point, then
Ron, how would you distinguish between a replacement and an amendment? I think they would do the same thing. We might not want like the amendment either. But we still would automatically adopt the amendment, but not the replacement. I don't see a distinction. I mean, there's a distinction, obviously, in the terminology, but not on the effect.
Yeah, that's true too. So an amendment might be just the addition of one new provision, whereas a replacement would, would replace the entire chapter, would amend the entire chapter.
It's a scale issue, but
Right.
it could be a substantive issue as well.
Right.
I guess I, to me, there is a difference, right? I mean, replace is just a much more comprehensive, I think it is. And so I'm very comfortable with amendment, comfortable with reordering. I'm not comfortable with the replacement. It's just my
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly delete that word.
It doesn't materially affect the ordinance, so I think that it's still okay to vote, given the, the condition that that replacement is dropped as a Thank you, Barney. Any other comments or discussion points for this? Okay, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Also move to adopt the move to adopt the ordinance as amended.
Second?
Second.
Wonderful. Any discussion? Okay. Votes, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Could we record a special thanks to the Land use committee and Deed and England for her efforts on this? This was really a real task of love and dedication to work.
More, more to come, Barney.
More to come, right. Yeah, I know. She, she always has another chapter to offer. I really, this is really very, very appreciative.
Thank you. Good work. Great. So we are now in the council discussions portion of the agenda. The first is with respect to the fiscal year 25 budget and tax rates. Happy to have a discussion, even with regard to our earlier presentation by Wonders, whatever anyone's thinking.
I would just like to ask for the benefit of residents who may be listening in or watching this later, if we could have either Rich or the town manager, just give us a summary of what's different between the FY 24 and FY 25, what we're proposing for FY 25.
What's different? Are, are you, I mean, what I mean
What I mean is, are we, are we proposing? What I mean is, um, are we, are we proposing, uh? You know, can you say that the budget that we are proposing for FY 25 is essentially a continuation of the same programs for 24? Is there anything noteworthy, such as a reduction or a flatlining of tax rates and that sort of thing?
Well, the big, the, uh, Todd should answer it in detail, but the big. Things were we, you know, we removed a little bit of, um. Um, what was the item? We took $25,000 of and moved it into. Um, I'm trying to remember what it is. Have to look at the budget itself, but I don't.
The legislative aid.
Yes, right. That's the change. But everything else, we pretty much, it, it's the same as it was last year based on. You know, all of our projections that, that we're. That we've gotten so far for it looks, everything looks fairly stable. Uh. So there, there's really no substantive changes that we've made to this budget that's different from last year's.
The constant yield rate, uh, was decreased slightly.
Yeah, it was very slightly. It was. And Todd, you may want to speak to that. One of the, one of the. One of our, I think one of our continuing concerns is something we're going to look at or need to look at. Is we have a hu, uh, you know, a large. Reserve and, um. It, it, we just don't need, you know, we, we don't need all of the income, the tax income that we've got. For the little, what I'll call the little stuff. So to reduce that. Uh, portion of the tax burden is. It is really not significant. I, I don't know what it is. A couple of cents. Ron, I mean, yeah, Todd.
Yeah. So, yeah, so we, we. Oh, I didn't know. Jump in or go ahead, Todd, if you wanted to jump in. I was just going to talk about why the, the constant yield rate for property tax, but.
Todd doesn't know he's on mute.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, uh, the constant yield tax rate is the rate certified by the state, um, based on the assessable base of real property in the town. It's going down from 91 hundredths of a cent to 84 one hundredths of a cent. Effectively meaning that the assessable basis increased and therefore the constant yield, as its name suggests, is decreasing to allow us to maintain. The same yield as we have in previous years. It's always around $131,000 that we get in property taxes. Eighty four one hundredths of a cent per $100 of assessed value basically equates to $84 for every million dollars of assessed value. Extremely nominal tax rate and by, by assessing such a rate, uh, the town, uh, has the ability to receive Montgomery County tax duplication reimbursement. Which is effectively what Montgomery County provides the town for duplicative services that the town provides that they don't have to otherwise provide. Um, so each year we get the constant yield tax rate, which basically, as I said, as its name suggests. If the assessable base goes up, the tax rate goes down and vice versa.
Um, and it, and it's something we. We would lose out significantly if we didn't even, if we didn't impose the tax.
Correct. We would not receive a Montgomery County tax duplication because we're effectively not, there is no duplicative tax if we don't assess a property tax.
Um, Richie referred to income tax and, and that's a state algorithm that we have no, um, say, uh, about, uh, and, and control over. Uh, in terms of what, what we need versus what we get, um, I, you know, we offer good services, uh, to our, to our residents, certainly, and, and are very. Uh, responsible, uh, with how the, uh, the funding, I, I believe anyway, uh, with how the, the funding is, uh. Uh, allocated within the budget. So, um, yeah, any other comments?
No, and I, and I should, I should have used tax revenues instead of prior income tax. It was our.
And for the record, Todd, it's what 200 and something thousand that we get? Was, was the amount we get from tax reimbursement?
About a quarter of a million dollars. Yeah.
Dollars. So, so we're investing 131,000, getting. More or less double that back. That's, that's not a bad return on our investment. Just saying.
Very good.
Right. So then if the council then adopts the, excuse me, introducing the ordinance to adopt the budget and tax rates, as I suggested earlier. Um, I will proceed to publicize this and in summary format in the election issue of the forecast. And, uh, complete budget, comprehensive budget documents will be posted on the website and residents will be directed to those. Uh. As well through the election issue of the forecast. Uh, it will be accompanied by a budget narrative that explains each line item in the budget. Um, you will hold a public hearing in the May 7th annual meeting on the budget and adopted that same evening with any amendments that you may choose to. Uh, agree to or adopt, um, prior to adoption of, of the final as amended, if, if so amended.
Did that answer your question, Joy? Do we want to discuss, uh, wonders and their presentation, uh, at this time?
I would like to wait. I'd like to get the additional.
Get the additional information.
Right. I'm certainly, I'll say I'm certainly sympathetic, but I just, I feel I owe it to. Our fellow residents who might ask to provide more clarity about. Exactly the need and how it would be used. I just don't feel quite, we've heard enough yet. Sort of in process.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I kind of felt, we didn't ask that same level of questions for Chevy Chase at home. Um, so I, in, in terms of, of, uh, you know, they're, they're asking for particular amount that's equal to what we would provide to Chevy Chase at home and. Um, I, what I heard and maybe I, 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 I misheard was that it would go towards, uh, improving the physical space within the Lawton Center. Um, that, that funding for, for, for this year. Um, but. As long as it's clear what it is that you're wanting to see, um, Todd, did you feel that you've got that laundry list of what? What you would like, what you will ask wonders to provide in terms of information?
I feel like I could go back and review the audio for certainly to, to, to review it. And I, I, I hope, I hope Joanne was taking notes and you get the information that you requested. I. Don't know if I need to follow up with her in any way, but I would note that if the council is not meeting as a group together until the. Uh, May 7th annual meeting, which it won't be, at least currently as scheduled, um, then this would be a supplemental appropriation as part of the FY 25 budget as an amendment, as a supplemental appropriation outside of the formal. Adoption of the, of the budget for FY 25, which is not a problem at all. Um, just that you won't really have a chance to assemble, discuss, decide. And, uh, assuming that you have more questions of Joanne, we'd likely have to have a, a presentation from her as a follow-up at the May meeting. Or later than that, but it likely would be treated as a supplemental appropriation rather than being incorporated into the, into the final FY 25 budget.
Okay.
Let me just offer a thought. Uh, we, we have a, um, I'm sorry, Rich, what were you going to say?
No, I was, I was going to say, uh, we, we also are. Planning to discuss at some point, the additional funding that we want to, that we may provide to the parks. So if that, if we. If it's going to require a supplemental appropriation for one or the other. Um, it, it doesn't do any harm to, to wait. Until we get all the information we want, right? Cause we're going to have.
I would encourage you to, yeah, wait until you have sufficient information and then decide. There's nothing, no harm in supplemental appropriations.
Yeah.
Right. And they, their fiscal year, I mean, presumably they would mainly just want it this fiscal year, which doesn't end until.
August. August, yeah.
One other thought I had about it though is, is, uh, well, first of all, we also have a, we have a. We have a work session confident on, on, on April 24th.
Uh, per separate matter, but yes.
But we could attach this as a public matter.
That's true.
If we wanted to take it up then.
That's true.
Um, I take your point, Rich, but I think they are somewhat separate to my, my mind that. Anything we might do for the Bethesda Market Park would ultimately be in the form of a resolution, but the money's not going to go out the door for a very long time. Uh, and certainly won't affect the FY 25 budget, but, but, um, uh, obviously this one would. So I'm, I'm comfortable if we can get the information that we could potentially have our discussion on April 24th.
Got it.
Just offering that as a thought. Uh, the other thought, at least I wanted to throw out, I know, I, there's a, this is a two edged sword, but at least want my colleagues to think about it. Is what, if they're really in a deficit. And they're eager to raise money. Should we consider, uh, whatever we support could often be in some way a matching grant as well. I just. You know, just sometimes that's a powerful incentive, um, and, and organizations welcome someone who's anchors a fundraising drive. To raise additional money. So just a thought.
I was actually. And I, I was also wondering if we might be willing to, um, and I guess this is just a different version of that to. Give them more if they have need for it. It's, there certainly is a lack of childcare around the county and the country and.
They have empty spaces too.
They have empty spaces and, um, uh, it's always good to have things in place to help attract more young. Families to the area, so.
So you guys thinking are. A, a grant, a straight grant, and then another. Tranche, which we would set aside as a matching grant program?
Maybe.
Just, just throwing out thoughts at the moment.
Yeah, no, no, but that I, I would, I, I'm kind of with Stephanie. I, I, I was kind of surprised that it was only going to be $10,000 because. They're going to end the year with a balance sheet of $346 or something like that. I mean, it was, um. I, I, I thought it was a relatively low amount that, you know, for the, for what we get from the wonders center at the, at. In the town. So. I, I would be in favor of a, of a. A grant, a straight grant. And then aside, next to that, maybe in the, uh, another chunk of money that we would set aside. If they could match, we would, we would provide that as well. So that's. I guess I'm agreeing with Stephanie and Barney both.
Definitely. They provide a good service. Obviously they've proven that they are, um, you know, operating at a very high caliber. I will just mention to. Um, to you all that, that. Uh, consistency is, is probably a really good thing. So if, if we are going to enter into a situation for other. Uh, organizations that might come before us in the future in terms of grant, matching grant, I just want everyone to consider all of that. Um, but, but, uh, all good discussion points for the 24th.
Well, and the, and the other one is key and that, which I think would be good for us is, uh, to again further strengthen the nexus. That's really vital. Otherwise it's not compliant. We don't have, as we've all noted to many residents in different times, we are not allowed to give money away to charities unless we know that it's also for the benefit of the town. Uh, so the, the stronger. Exactly. So the stronger we can make that connection. And that's why I was asking about the after school program. I wasn't even really aware of it, but that's something that I think we would like to highlight as part of the reason for us to support.
The other thing, the, the other thing that, that she offered. Was to put in something into the town, you know, our town crier or was it our monthly newsletter? About the, uh, parenting. Parenting activities that they have. Which I thought was a good idea. I mean, we put in the. You know, the Chevy Chase at home stuff, we could certainly put in stuff from. On parenting as well.
Absolutely. They'd be great. I think very welcome resources, um, for, for, uh, the newsletter and town criers or just events. Yeah. Thank you. Anything else before?
I guess the only other thing I wanted to mention about the budget, which I thought generally was fine with the changes that were made to it. But I think we did have to close, should have closed out the discussion about police protection. Um, and Todd, I'd gone back and done some work. I actually found records going back to 2011 and Todd sent them around to everybody. Uh, which I think demonstrated that, that, uh, if anything, crime is down in the town, um, and we've had ways of crime that were much more serious back, uh, 2014, 2015. Um, and also I think Todd, I take comfort from your statement that. Um, we already in fact have most of our. Uh, our coverage actually is overnight. Uh, and you're able to direct that if that were to be valuable. Quote to more, more of the times that the cops are standing on the beat to be over on the western side of the town, if that is an area of concern. If that may be a simple, a very simple way to address. If, what, at least a concern if, even though we haven't actually seen an issue in terms of, of crime in the town. So on that basis, I'm, I'm comfortable with the budget as it currently is.
Great point.
I think the only other comment, which I know you've looked into, maybe you want to speak to Todd, is that it's not with, with, with the county police force down, it's not like we have extra. Huge extra reservoir of off-duty cops who are. Able to volunteer in service in the town. It's a, it's a limited pool.
That's right. It is a limited pool. They're having a hard time. There's a lot of attrition, a lot of difficulties with recruitment. They're down. Uh, staffing levels, they're using the current officers to cover more. You know, shifts. It's difficult to recruit right now. Um. And, um, like you said, 95% or close to it of our night shifts are covered. And I've spoken to our supervisor of the off-duty officers and he's. Possibly going to try to get every shift covered if he can, if he can find the interest in it, but certainly I've, I've directed him to. You know, focus on the, um, the area of town that is, is the most susceptible to crime of convenience off of the, off of the Wisconsin Avenue corridor, which is the southwest garage in the town. But, um, he said he might have a hard time consistently ensuring that every night shift was, um, covered, even though he's done a very good job of covering most of them. Um. Simply because of the recruitment difficulties right now, officers being pulled off of, of, of. Having working, asking to be, to work double shifts or being pulled into active duty status to supplement the police force. While they're having recruitment problems. So. And in any event, even if he was able to find. The ability to cover every night shift, it doesn't mean that every night shift will be covered because they on, because the, uh, the Montgomery County Police Department pulls. Off to the officers on duty and they're sick. Call outs and things like that. So we're never going to get a hundred percent. Um. But we, we're darn close.
Thank you.
Great. Um, shall we move on to the next item, which is?
I would need a, uh, motion.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I take discussions and then I, yeah. Yes, let's entertain a motion, shall we, to, uh, introduce this ordinance?
I think the treasurer should make that motion.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the, uh, the ordinance to adopt the budget for fiscal year. 24 and to levy a tax on certain real and personal property under the provisions of. The Maryland code.
Uh, it's fiscal year 25. I agree with that.
Yes.
Approving it or are we just putting it before?
Introducing it.
Introducing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Introduce it for a public hearing. Now we'll go to the next round. Um. You may recall, uh, earlier in the year, uh, we had a discussion about. When there's a real estate transaction in the town, um, that there be a, a form added, uh, during closing so that people. Uh, buyers are purchasers are aware that, uh, they're living in a municipality. It's represented by a council. Uh, there are certain rules with respect to building code, trees, noise, things like that. Um, the reason it came about is that there were people moving in town, uh, proceeding to maybe do some remodeling work, uh, maybe some tree. Work and of course through code enforcement, there was a little bit of awkwardness in terms of welcome to the town. You're already breaking a rule. So we thought, um, by introducing a, a disclosure form, uh, that that would, uh, you know, just be. More, more of an eye opening way that, that they're moving into a municipality. Um, the council agreed at that point and we'd been playing nice, if you will, with, uh, the, uh, um, G car, which is stands for Eric Help Me.
Greater Capital Area Association for Realtors.
Greater Capital Area. Uh, they, they had said, look, we introduced forms two times a year. We, it's been many, many months now. Um, that we've been waiting, uh, uh, in the meantime, other municipalities have caught on to what we are doing, which sometimes happens and, um. A, another municipality had passed an ordinance and jumped in the queue ahead of us as a result. Because the ordinance had been passed, therefore taking effect in so many days and quickly needed to be, um, uploaded to the system. So I am. We're now going to do the same thing, uh, hopefully, depending on the discussion tonight, uh, an introduction that, uh. I, I, I personally think this is a. An important thing to do to make people aware of our ordinances, um, not only. Not just so that, you know, don't break the rules, but to also be aware of just the different programs we have in place that. We are a, a community that offers many different types of, of services and using them to, to all of those resources. Um, so with that, I'm happy to have a discussion about it. Okay.
Right of both.
Good. All right. I'd like to introduce the, uh, for, for public hearing, an ordinance to require, uh, real property. I'd like to introduce the uh for for public hearing, an ordinance to require uh real property sale disclosure regarding town regulations.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I eyes have it. Thank you very much. Bethesda Market Park, Barney, couple of good stuff going on.
Yeah, there's a lot going on. Um, the um I'd like to take some time tonight to go through a proposal quite carefully and put it on the public record and make it available for residents regarding uh a request for us to consider putting additional funds uh into the park uh to move it from being what it would otherwise be, which is basically a green field with small couple of dog runs to adding amenities that we think will really make it an exciting and vibrant place that we'll all really enjoy and get much more use of. I thought I would start by taking a moment just to remind everybody of the background here. Um, the the town has already committed four and a half million dollars to this project. And we're also going to be channeling an additional one million dollars from the state that was set up going back a couple of years ago. So that's a total of five and a half million dollars, which is substantial. We shouldn't feel at all that that's, you know, so inadequate from from our perspective. But um of one of of that, one million of that is for the garage and four and a half million is essentially channeled directly to the parks themselves. Uh, however, we also know this budget was 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 what was used in the fall of twenty twenty-two when we got finally approval from the county council. And it was based on estimates for costs that were done in January of twenty twenty-two. So they're already over two years old, and there's been a lot of inflation. And also, with the design work that's now been done, it's also been apparent that the budget was light, L I T E anyway. Um, so we're now in a situation where if we have to live with the budget that uh was approved by the county council and incorporates our money, uh it would basically be a very basic park. Uh, there'd be a green, there'd be some trees, some walkways. And where lot ten is on one side, there'd be a couple of small dog runs for large and small dogs, but no other amenities. Uh, and I think what what we fear and what we would be losing here is the opportunity that many of us who had a chance to visit the Metropolitan Park over in Arlington, Alexandria, you know, we really don't want to lose, which is to make a really world-class park here. I mean, that's too high-blown a phrase, but a park that we're going to really love and really want to enjoy and has amenities that people want. Uh, so um that's some background. And the rationale behind this proposal um is that uh we want to make sure we get these amenities in the high-quality park. Um, we want to make sure that it is well-designed. We want to make sure that it has ample contingencies because we're still a long ways ahead before it's going to finally we're going to get to a guaranteed maximum price, which is what the developers will be getting final bids for. But that probably won't happen till first quarter of twenty twenty-six. So there's still a ways to go before we can even get final pricing on some of this. So we want to make sure the contingencies are generous. So far, they're they're in the budget around ten percent, but we think they should be raised beyond that. Um, and we also want to have flexibility of design. There could be trade-offs between capital expenditures and maintenance, for example. If you build something better upfront, it may require less maintenance, and that may be desirable in terms of maintaining the park. Uh, we may also find that there are things that the the designers come up with perhaps slightly more elaborate, slightly more fun, slightly more interesting, cost a bit more. Let's have room for it. You know, we should, we should feel, we, I think it's a more uh positive attitude about what this park can really be and 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 give scope for it. The the um uh having said that, is it, well, we do not know exactly what all this will cost, but therefore, we want to make sure it's a generous amount. Because one of the commitments we've made to our residents is that if we're going to think seriously about an additional contribution at this time, this should be it. We don't plan to then have to come back yet again. So let's err on the side of asking for more, hopefully get it, get buy-in from our partners uh and feel that we've done our job and now it now it's set. The um, I think one other aspect of why an expanded and more vibrant park is important is because of the connection to the farm women's market. Um, the the farm women's market expansion and making it into a broader food emporium is exciting. I think we've gotten a lot of good feedback from the town residents about that. But those endeavors are not without risk. Um, and and in fact, the developers, E Y A, are not themselves experts at this. They're going to be subcontracting that out to another design group who have worked on other such parks, uh projects like Eastern Market and uh Union Market. But you need to have a critical mass of stalls, vendors, and also other activities that attract people. So we really see a symbiotic relationship between people coming to in a large farm women's market, enjoying the park, but also people coming to enjoy the park who will also shop at the market. And that economic vitality is good for Bethesda, but it's also good for the town. I think we want to make sure this project is successful. The um, we also want to make sure that that um we are not the only ones doing this. Uh, we have funds available. We can do a lot. We want to make sure that there are others who are contributing as well, and the plan, I think, addresses that important part. The other part of it is the rationale is doing it now as opposed to later. And we understand there's a, there's a a very valid perspective, which says, like in almost any negotiation, don't show your hand early, wait, let's see what others are willing to do. But I think we've had a long experience now dealing with this county. And we can wait, and we can wait, and we can wait. But others don't feel the urgency or need to act. Whereas when we ourselves have shown leadership and put something on the table, that has galvanized action. And I think we're now in that circumstance. Um, the the private developers are going to be focused on what they have to pay for, which is the farm women's market itself and the expand and the expansion of it and the cleanup and the beautification of the plaza and undergrounding the utilities at the corner of Willow in Wisconsin. That part of the total project is a hundred percent the developers, they have to pay for it. It's a lot of money, actually. So they're, they're, they have to uh, that's where their funds are going to be going. So in terms of getting other funding, it really is going to be the Parks Department or other potential private sources. But we don't, I don't see that they're going to move unless the town is prepared to make some commitment and say, yes, here's what we think we can do. Um, and I also think that it makes sense for us to do something now because it's timely. Uh, you know, we've almost, we've already lost at least a year from our initial hope. Uh, at the time that the budget was approved by the county council in the fall of twenty twenty-two, we had hoped that a site plan would be submitted by September of twenty twenty-three. Well, the county took so long, and of course, there's also the real estate crisis and the developers a little bit queasy, but you know, that whole schedule was blown to pieces. Now we hope that we can get a site plan in the hopper with the planning board by this fall, September, October of twenty twenty-four. But for that, there has to be a lot of design work. And the more clarity that the developers have as to exactly what amenities, and especially if we're talking about a water feature and a stage that they need to design and plan for, the sooner that they can feel confident that that's going to be funded, the more certainty they can put behind that design work and hit hit the schedule of that we'd like them to see for when the site plan can be submitted. So I think it is valuable for us to move sooner rather than later. So with all that, a sort of a rationale and a long preamble, the proposal that uh I'd like to suggest for consideration by the council, and I and I want to stress that that for tonight, the ask I would, I'd like everyone to consider is essentially a consensus that this proposal, if you're comfortable with it, um can be brought forth to the community as a draft, recognizing that we need the community's input, and we also need the input from developers, I mean, from our partners. So we're not saying it's necessarily final. But we feel that we are generally comfortable enough with its parameters that we'd like to have serious discussion about it. So that's kind of the spirit in which I'm proposing this. So the thought here is that we would look for a total in uh additional amount of funding for the park of five million dollars. And of that five million, the town would contribute, first of all, the five hundred thousand dollars of additional state money we have. I previously referred to one million dollars that was given to us initially. But subsequently and after the old budget was set, we received another half million dollars. So clearly, that should go into the pot. Then on top of that, we would put in what I'll call as a base amount of a hun- of one point five million dollars. And on top of that, we would put in up to another one point five million dollars if matched dollar for dollar from other sources. So that would mean that the total funding from the town in that case would be three million out of the total five million that we're talking about. The other sources uh that we'd be looking for, you know, legal term, a capital O, capital S, other sources, uh one and a half million. Obviously, the major party that we would expect to come up with that additional money would be the uh would be the Parks Department. But on the other hand, we're perfectly comfortable in this proposal if private parties also put up money, and we would match that. So we're not saying upfront that X dollars has to come from Parks Department, Y from any other source. We're simply saying, look, we feel other parties need to step up, but when they do, we're prepared to match a dollar for dollar. So we already know of one uh private donation uh which uh could be quite substantial. And if that comes through, that potentially could reduce the amount that the Parks Department itself would be putting into the project. But the goal here is to get a full one and a half million to match one and a half million that we might be, that we would be putting in in that case. Um, the um uh, we should also note that that if, in fact, at the end of the day, we do not, the the additional amenities we're talking about and the use of the contingencies does not require a full five million dollars more. Well, then let's say it's four and a half million, just to pick a number. Then potentially, we would back down what we'd be putting in by half of that amount. So we would save ourselves, we put in two and three-quarter million instead of three million dollars, save ourselves two hundred and fifty thousand. And the other parties would be putting in that much less. So there would be a an aligned sense of everybody matching, putting in more money if necessary, putting in less money if it's not needed. But one idea which uh I don't think is a formal part of this proposal, but I at least want to put out for people's thought, is that we all know that maintenance is is potentially an issue, uh especially of some of the more expensive features to maintain, such as the the water feature. And so um the the um uh one thought would be that to the extent that money is saved on the capital budget, we potentially could leave it in as pre-funding of maintenance charges that we know are going to come down the pike, so that there'd be a way to sort of protect and put some money into the pot for maintenance upfront uh with with presumably the Parks Department sharing equally with us. So that's the, that's the idea with this. Um, we would um basically be putting in uh the town's own resources, seven and a half million dollars, channeling another one and a half million dollars from the state. So it'd be a total of nine million dollars that we'd be directing into the project, of which one million goes to the garage and eight million is going to the parks. Um, we certainly have um ample funding for this, uh as we've discussed at our last meeting. Um, you know, even after you take out the four and a half million we have allocated so far, um uh we still have over thirteen million dollars of of reserves. Uh, and if we were to put in this additional amount, we'd still have over ten million dollars of reserves. And by way of comparison, at a period of time when our residents thought there was an enormous amount of extra money and didn't know what to do with it, sort of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand twenty timeframe, the average reserve level was about eight million. So we even even if we put in this full seven and a half million, we still have a very large amount of reserves to for anything else that we may wish to spend money on. And the other part too, which I wanted to mention is that and and this is a perspective, because as we've, as you know, we have been gradually moving the ARPA federal grant money through our town finances. And so it's no longer, especially by the end of this next fiscal year, very little of it will be left as ARPA money. And almost all of it will have been essentially rolled through and become additional reserves. But we know that two point three million dollars um of unspent federal grant money is essentially bolstering our town financial position. And so one way that that I think is fair to view this is that in reality, out of the three million dollars that we might be adding to our contribution, two point three million of that three million is essentially just providing, as I think, seeing ourselves as a channel for federal grant money that is going to be steered into this project, which really leaves only seven hundred thousand actually coming from, in a sense, our own tax revenues. Um, the, and I would say that that uh we all were very familiar with the ARPA regulations because before we came up with the the plan that Todd has put in place for using the money through our 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 um uh our operating expenses, we looked at its condition out, conditions very closely. And and I feel very comfortable saying that that spending money on in green infrastructure and parks is right in the middle of the fairway of what the ARPA grant money was expected to be used for. Uh, and I, and we know that there were several town residents at the time who were kind of upset that we even accepted the money, saying, wait a minute, we don't need it. And I think our opportunity to spend it in a way that enhances the common good for Bethesda in an infrastructure project that is squarely something that was uh favored by that legislation is consistent with the the spirit of grant that we received. Um, so that's the plan. Uh, and there are some conditions uh that are also go with this. Um, that we want assurance from the Parks Department that they're fully behind it, you know, and including that they will be doing what they need to do to support the additional um other sources of up to one and a half million dollars. And that they buy into the amenities that are that we expect to go with this, our our contribution. And the three critical amenities that we're talking about uh are a water feature, the stage, and a play exercise area for the other space on lot ten. And I wouldn't rule out there's some other ideas. We're not saying that that we're wedded to those exactly, but you know, won't consider other things. But those are the three things that many residents had raised before, were excited about, and are currently not part of the base project that that has been designed. Um, we also uh want an understanding from the planning department that they will uh not require undergrounding the wires uh on Forty-Sixth Street or on the back alley side of Lot Ten, um uh which um is both very expensive, but also we we believe not particularly fruitful expenditure. It doesn't add anything to the parks, uh and most residents don't really care. In fact, I'm, I, some I think would be upset if all the wires had came, had to be buried on Forty-Sixth Street and all those trees had to come down. Um, and I think it's important for us, if we're going to push for additional money from our town, that we demonstrate discipline, that we're not going to spend money on things that aren't necessary. And um uh so that's a condition. And um we also would like to be assured that the work on Lot Ten uh is going to proceed immediately upon the completion of the garage under Lot Twenty-four. We, we've always been adamant, and it's been clear in our past resolutions, that uh this is not two separate projects. This is one park covering two parking lots. And we want to make sure that there's an ironclad commitment to do both projects and do them as quickly as possible. Uh, and uh making sure that the work on Lot Ten proceeds immediately uh after Lot Twenty-four's garage is open. We know that has to be sequential because they're not going to close the surface parking lot on Lot Ten until the new garage is open. That makes sense. But we want to make sure there's no lag and the work proceeds immediately. Uh, we also want to have a clear understanding of the rules and regulations that will apply to these parks and how they will be enforced. Uh, and we also want a reaffirmation of the commitment that we put into our previous resolutions that uh the Parks Department will uh is committing to a collaborative agreement with the town to cover programming of activities. Uh, that's both in terms of what will be done, but also looking at the hours and making sure that they won't be upsetting to to residents in the vicinity. Um, and finally, something which Irene has raised, and I think is a very good idea, is we want to make sure that there will be periodic surveys to demonstrate the use of the park and who's coming to see it and to make use of it, that this is a much broader, which we are confident will be the case, that this will, this will be a much broader use park and certainly not uh something that's just for the town at all, but in fact, for broader Bethesda and for all Montgomery County. Finally, in terms of a schedule for this, um we're obviously introducing the idea tonight. Uh, and we'd like to probably, if 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 the council agrees and wants to see this in front of residents, that we uh will put it into recorder, but also probably follow up with a with a town crier. Uh, but one of the things we want to make clear is that the it's the the with this additional understanding of a larger budget and revised plans, that there will be another charrette, another opportunity for residents, not just in the town, but all over, to see these updated plans. And that we don't want to be in a position of ask of our of this council taking a final vote to potentially approve this um until and only after that charrette has been held and residents have the opportunity to correspond with us and register their views. We want to make sure that we do not take a vote until we've heard back from residents about the plan, but it's not fair to ask them to think about the plan until they have a chance to see what the plan buys, which is essentially what the revised charrette will be. So uh that schedule is also an important part of it. So that's, that's uh basically uh what I wanted to go. So that's that's uh basically uh what I wanted to go over. And uh, I want to thank uh the the long range planning committee had some useful discussions. I think at the time that, in all candor, we had some discussions with them. We were thinking it was somewhat smaller amount. But the more that uh I thought about it and and took advice of others, I think that going to the five million dollar number really just seals all plausible um contingencies and cost of amenities and make sure that we can really be comfortable that this is the final number. Uh, and I will say that that um Irene and I have had a chance to review these ideas uh with the Parks Department, and I think generally they're favorably receiving them. Um, and and uh feels that our ask of what we want from them is certainly reasonable. They're not commenting further on that right now, so I don't want to represent that. But it's basically good, a a sensible proposal, I'll leave it at that. And also that uh we've we've had a chance to meet with the planning department. And they are also sympathetic to the to the request to not have to underground the wires in these two locations, uh, which will allow us to focus the money, as I've indicated, on these additional amenities and making sure that the park itself is as best it can be. Uh, so it's good to have some initial support from other key parties. So with that, um, happy to answer questions and consider anything else you want to ask.
Thank you, Barney. Um, thank you for all of the hard work, because this has been a labor of love, of a labor uh all around. I I I have said this a couple of times, th- this is an example of a public-private partnership that could be really successful. And I think the growing pains of that in terms of working with the county and the parks and all that has been, you've been so wonderful in trying to ke- keep people together and keep people moving forward. Uh, and I do want to also mention, and you did, you did talk about this, that there's, there have been a lot of discussions about the costs and what can be done from a design perspective to to, you know, get that same quality level without having to spend as much money. And um, the parties are all talking to each other. It's just a little bit slower than maybe we're used to, you know? Um, but I'm really excited and and you reminded me with the last time there was the shirts. I mean, it was two overfilled rooms between the um BCC, um, I don't know if it was in the library or in the comp, in the main area or, but certainly in here in the lot in center, it was overfilled. Um, so there's a lot of interest in um, in in having a gathering space. It's so desperately needed for Bethesda, but something that's really going to be special. And uh, um, I I think this is a great proposal, so thank you for putting it forth. Um, does anyone have any comments?
Um, I want to second what Irene said about um the importance of this work. Uh, and I'm really glad that you're handling it. I I can't think of too many other resources that are in such proximity to the town that are going to end up being more important to the to the folks here and to their ability to continue to enjoy our proximity to Bethesda. And um, honestly, I think that the more populated parts of Montgomery County are way behind the more populated parts of Northern Virginia when it comes to um play space and open space and spaces for dogs as well. I'll put that pitch in there, so really excited about this. Um, on a much more granular level, I would like to just put a marker in. Uh, you mentioned making sure that we have a full understanding of the rules and regulations that are going to apply to what we're doing. I think it would be good if sooner rather than later, we figured out what county regulations apply to splash pads because I am concerned that they are considered public pools. And I think it would behoove us to actually go to the county sooner rather than later and ask if they would consider amending. And and by the way, I'm pretty sure it's the county executive. It's not like the county council passed a general rule giving discretion to the county executive to come up with regs for governing things like splash pads. And my understanding is that what they then did was they just lumped splash pads and interactive fountains and with swimming pools. And a lot of the same rules apply. It's so we may want to spearhead an effort to get that changed. And I I have a sense that that's one of the reasons we don't have very many of those features.
Not have any of them working in Montgomery County.
I mean, just up at Germantown and the big um
Okay.
Big water feature thing that's up there, but there's always, there's a lifeguard on duty and everything. And I know that the town of Silver Spring ran into a real problem with its interactive fountain and ended up having to shut it down.
You're raising a very good point, um, and we've had some discussions with with the Parks Department about it. Uh, and they've represented that they do not believe a lifeguard is required. A public bathroom is required, but the farm windows market will have that.
Mm-huh.
Uh, the water has to be tested, but that can be done automatically. But then there's still some other requirements. So your point's still well taken, don't don't, I'm not disagreeing at all. There's still, there are other requirements that will require some some interventions potentially. So who provides those interventions and how often and so forth?
Be good to have some clarity.
Exactly. And you're absolutely right that we want to have it absolutely tied down. We're certainly not going to put ourselves in a position of financing something that isn't going to run.
Right.
Uh, so making sure that's clear upfront. Um, and 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 there is a sort of an institutional feeling among some people. Oh gee, those water features are a lot of work and so on, but you know, we've all visited Arlington and Alexandria.
They don't have to be.
They don't have to be. And and we'd love to find out that, we'd love to be able to demonstrate that the Bethesda Market Park is the one that can prove that 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 we in Montgomery County don't have unusual DNA in this regard. We can actually do something that
We can have nice things.
jurisdictions also know how to do. Uh, and and that I think uh all of us feel that come summer, now brutally hot they are, the chance to dangle your feet and get it wet and have some kids, that's just going to be fun. And that's going to attract people, it's going to be a nice.
Exactly. And we, like I said, we are, we are very, very low on those bases compared to our colleagues in other suburbs.
Yeah.
Thank you. Joy, Rich, do you have any comment?
Um, I would just like to.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank, thank you, uh, thank you, Barney, again, for all of the hard work and the corralling of uh all of the partners in this um three P project. Because it is, um, you know, I also work in Bethesda. Um, and among a number of businesses, we are trying to do everything we can to attract our workers back to downtown Bethesda. And I think this is another, this would be another feature um that really makes it compelling um to come to Bethesda um and makes this attractive, an attractive place to come, especially if you're one of those young people coming from, you know, the Navy Yard area where they've got water features and parks and all kinds of things and waterfront property. So um, I think this is a, this would be a real coup for Bethesda if we can get this done. Um, I have a couple of uh, you know, really granular questions that you may not have the answer to. But um, if you could remind us how, I recall there was an impasse with respect to the payment for the design work that was done in advance of the previous charrettes.
Right.
And um, how was that resolved? And on a go-forward basis, if we want to see charrettes between now and say, August, um, you know, how will the the fees for that design work be paid? And will that require us to put any money in?
Your your memory is very, is excellent, that's exactly what happened. The the um, the developers were paying for the landscape architect. And we're going, going, you know, out front for that and then realizing that they had no idea when legal agreements were going to be signed. But I'm very happy to say that as of last week, the Parks Department has executed an interim agreement, they call it, uh, which allows them to flow funding uh to the uh, to the developers for the design work. And we have not been approached to support that. Um, so our presumption is that our money will fall due down this road when work really begins. Um, the um, so the, with that money flowing, then that should open the spigot, if you will, for the landscape architects to go back to work and to do the additional design and so forth that's required. I was also add that the the art, yeah, there's also a whole lot of work that the um, uh, the developers have to do for the site plan, just on their two main buildings. I mean, you know, the overall project is a hundred and fifty million dollars. It's not like it's a park with a couple of small apartments. It's basically two large um buildings going up with a park and underground garage attached to it. So they've got a lot of their expense that they have to incur on their own side to get the the planning done. Um, the other thing while we're asking, mentioning legal agreements, the other, the other agreement that's been held up for a very long time and been very frustrating is what's called the General Development Agreement, the GDA, between the county, the Department of Transportation and and the developers. But that finally also seems to be moving forward. Um, and uh, and there have been a couple of changes of drafts and the developers sent another markup back to the county just last week. So we're hopeful that that will be executed in the near future. When that is done, then when when we can see it, then we will have to fashion our agreement with the developers uh for our one million contribution to the garage component. Um, so that's next legal work coming down the pike for us.
Rich?
Go for it, Barney.
So I believe the question before us tonight is um to proceed with with uh publicizing this proposal to our our residents and uh in whatever form or fashion in terms of the the mechanism. Uh, and potentially also start engaging the county executive on, you know, understanding a little bit more about the regulations around these splash pads. Um, that's what I'm gathering thus far, is everyone, how's everyone feel about that? And we, do we want to vote on that, or are we feeling?
I said, I mean, we need to, yeah. I don't know, God, do we need a voter, is we accept a consensus that we, this is a draft proposal that we would like to now present to the town?
That's fine, the consensus that it's a draft proposal that you want to present to the town.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Do we have that consensus?
We do.
We do.
Yes.
Excellent, we do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the attainable housing strategies initiative. Um, excuse me. Uh, a number of meetings have have taken place. Uh, I think that the uh, after I testified in uh in front of the planning board on the um proposed or draft recommendations document for attainable housing, there was a series of meetings in terms of communities that were inviting members of the planning board to come and provide a presentation to either municipalities or other neighborhoods and things like that. One notable one that occurred was um last week, a number of uh municipalities, um, kind of the lead mayor's meeting of the municipalities, there was a presentation provided by Lisa Givoni. Uh, and uh during that presentation, there are a number, obviously, questions asked about or clarification questions. One of the the big uh moments that came out was that the planning department uh is right now operating under the assumption that there would not be any changes to uh municipal regulations, building regulations that would, that would be different in in terms of treating multifamily properties differently than than how municipalities do today for single families. So there's no intent to say, okay, X municipality, um, where you you uh, these are your regulations for single-family homes, but it'll be different for multifamily. They're going to respect um whatever is in place for uh single-family homes to also be multifamily. Uh, we have asked for that to be put into the recommendations document, so there's no um, uh, you know, a misunderstanding. Uh, the the sentiment was also uh confirmed by the uh planning department director a couple of days ago. Uh, so we're hearing it from a couple of sources, and that's fantastic news. Um, I think that when, in in terms of the testimony, there's obviously uh questions that we have that we're waiting answers for. Uh, that the, by the way, that the testimony by the planning board was, sorry, planning department was received very well. Um, they're really looking into the recommendations we provided, the questions that we asked. We don't know the timing um with respect to when we'll hear back. Uh, but nonetheless, it was very positive. In the meantime, there's a number of work sessions that's starting tomorrow uh in front of the planning board by the planning department about each aspect of this attainable housing strategies initiative. Tomorrow's session will focus on the medium-scale housing, which is the attainable housing optional method, and what that will entail and and all of that. And per a great recommendation from uh Deedon, our our chair of the Land Use Committee, after each session, after each work session, there'll be a town crier released so that residents are informed in like bits and pieces for, you know, this is what's happening with medium scale versus small scale, blah, blah, blah. Every two weeks, we'll issue um such town criers with more details. Side, you know, digestible, but just so so folks are understanding that these discussions are occurring. And um by the end of, uh, well, certainly the start of the summer, the full recommendations report will be in front of the county council and then the whole cycle starts again. So um, things are moving in a in a good direction there. Um, and we are uh just trying to be as proactive as possible with respect to this initiative. So just want to let everyone know. Any questions?
Irene, thank you for your hard work on that. You've been really taking a important leadership role with other municipalities and your testimony is just really good. And I think uh the fact that they're taking our recommendations very seriously is
Yeah.
statement of quality of your work.
Thank you. Yeah, great, okay. Purple line. So a couple of different uh updates on that. So there's the Purple Line Surface Trail, which I'll get to in a second. I don't know if Ron needs, well, maybe for the MML legislative updates. Um, uh, Ron, do you want, I, we could skip Purple Line, go back to Purple Line afterwards, but MML legislative updates. I was going to have Joy give a quick thing, and I know you've had um been trying to reach out to understand more about what the governor's housing bill is, has actually, what actually passed, um, which no one seems to know at this point. But Joy, I'll go there so that way we can um let Ron go.
Sure, so um, I served on my final um MML Legislative Committee meeting, um, which was last week. Um, and um, this is a committee that um municipalities who are members of MML um may participate in. You have to apply to join the committee. Um, and then um over uh during the legislative session, you look at all of the bills that have been presented before the General Assembly that regard uh or or that might impact municipalities in some way. And they they then triage all of those bills and look at bills that, you know, might have, um, you know, a particularly high impact on municipalities, and those are the ones that we tend to uh pay attention to. Um, and among those, I I mentioned, and I've mentioned in previous meetings, um, that that bills that would impact our town, one of which would be uh speed cameras and whether or not we could have speed cameras in our town. And the other was this um set of housing bills that Governor Moore uh presented um to the General Assembly. The goal of um those three housing bills was to increase the supply of housing across the state, um, but primarily in Baltimore, um, as well as in um areas in and around transit. Um, we uh heard from uh a delegate that um the three housing bills passed. Speed cameras was also passed, but um the three housing bills passed. Um, and um, again, it's very difficult to tell what exactly, what actually passed. I'm going to turn it over to you, Ron, because I saw that you um made an inquiry um about a uh particularly turn of phrase that concerned us greatly.
Yes, sure. So in the the Governor's Housing Affordable Act, there is a new proposed section seven, five oh three that would say local governments need to allow qualified projects. Qualified project is defined as something that's within three quarters of a mile from a rail station, contains at least fifteen percent forty-year deed-restricted affordable units. And if that's the case, then the local government has to allow middle housing units in that area, which are the duplexes. which are the duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhouses. Then there's an exception in that provision that says this section doesn't apply to an area zone for single family as of January 1, 2024. And if the provision stopped there, it would be clear and we would have some relief because we would be exempted. But there's an and after that grandfathering date. And the phrase after the and does not make sense. I, I've, I've tried to make sense of it and cannot. It says during any process to increase allowable density under subsection C of this section. And then subsection C of that section describes the different ways that the local government can allow the needed missile, I'm sorry, middle housing units. But it doesn't make sense to me because if, if you're exempt under that section, you wouldn't go to the next sub paragraph to define the process for allowing the middle housing units. So, you know, I went through the whole bill in detail to try and see if I could make sense of it that way and could not. So I've reached out to delegate Solomon, one of the co-sponsors, as you know, to see if he could offer an explanation as to what is intended to that, that second phrase. Because it, you know, it seems to be an exemption paragraph, but then the exemption is rendered annuity if you have to go to the, the sub paragraphs below and implement missing middle housing anyway. And I'll let you know as soon as I hear back.
There were a flurry of amendments. It was, it, you know, I listened into the work session when all of these different amendments were being spouted out. The first time I heard the single family neighborhood exemption, I thought it was relating to the density bonuses. So if you were near transit, if the, if the developer was a 501(c)(3) as per the IRS code, all of this density bonuses would apply, which was another kind of nebulous thing, like what, what are we talking about here? So the, the single family neighborhood exemption, I thought, applied just to density bonuses. But when I finally saw what was, what was stated, it was extremely unclear as to what exactly we, single family neighborhoods were exempted from. So it's not a very well-written, and I mean, in 90-day session, people are trying to get something through. There's definitely, the, the planning department, the county planning department also does not know. They don't understand what was passed. So we're all a little bit in limbo as we try and understand. Ron, what is the effective date was, because originally it was October and, and then I saw January 1st, 2025. What was ultimately passed?
2025. I don't remember if it was January or June. Let me pull that up.
In effect, January 1st, 2025.
Would be exempt, but with the additional clause that ties to another.
No, the whole legislation takes effect January 1st, 2025.
Assuming it's signed by the governor, which would.
Yeah, which, you know, but nonetheless, so we have some time to figure out what was actually passed before the new session starts, which means there's likely going to be some amendments for the 2025.
It sounds like that will be the next process is what amendments do we want to clarify?
Exactly. Once everyone figures.
It is January 1, 2025. I mean, another, another issue I noted and I, I'll share with you.
Ron, before you go on, just make sure I understand, if, if, if this added clause were not there and the exemption was there, would that resolve our concern about unreasonableness?
No.
No, because that's a different.
That's still a problem no matter what.
A huge problem. Yeah.
Okay.
They never, they never went in, and sorry, I don't mean to be speaking for you, Ron, but let me know if you understand anything different. From, from the Maryland Association of Counties to Maryland Municipal League to countless other testify, no one understood this unreasonableness thing. It was never touched in the end. They left the language as is. So that it was a very interesting approach to what was everyone's question about what that terminology meant. So.
And I can share with everyone my analysis.
I'm sorry, the, the problem is that we don't, it's not that we don't know what it means. It's if you look at it inside the four corners of the document, it's very clear what it means.
Right.
It basically trumps all the other local regulations you have if the developer believes that, that, you know, his project has been in any way impeded from being.
The intent is, is, the intent of the language, as I understood it, and, and Joy, you'll, you'll correct me here, is that to prevent local jurisdictions from pulling, you know, 11th hour ordinances and, and really messing up the opportunity for even multifamily housing to be built. That it wasn't, for those of us that are, you know, playing nice and by the rules and all that, that wasn't even considered. It was the other side to make, to prevent such actions from taking place.
If I'm a developer, I read the act the way it's written and assume that it's clear. That's all.
Right.
Right, Ron?
Yes. Yeah, I agree with both of you. We, we do have indication that the legislative intent was to prevent de facto denials, provisions that are written in local codes with the sole purpose of defeating affordable housing. But the actual text of the law is much broader and allows a developer just to argue that you're rendering my project financially unviable. It could be a good faith requirement instead of a de facto denial. And if a good faith requirement impedes the project, you know, it could be overturned.
So I guess the moral to the story is there's still more work to be done. And that seems to be, I mean, it was really one of the, one of the first meetings that I attended of the legislative committee. Others explained quite openly that what we do in Maryland is we pass laws. And with the full intention to continue to amend those laws because we don't do it right the first time.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause they're written under time pressures.
You know, there are states where the state legislatures only meet every other year, just pointing that out.
I just learned about Texas, six weeks every other year. There you go. Great. Any other update? And, and the other thing that did pass that we were keeping our eye on was the state highway administration can automatically lower state roads that are abutting residential neighborhoods by five miles an hour without having to do like all the different studies, traffic studies and all of that. They can just go ahead and, and lower those limits by five miles. So that was another one that check, you know, could be good. But the speed limit, the speed cameras thing did pass, which what that means is what does that mean? Potentially municipalities can utilize non-police officer resources to be able to issue citations. That is a whole big thing that, that I would say we would have to study first before automatically doing anything. So. Okay. Thank you, Ron.
Good night, everybody.
Night. Purple line. So two different things there. One is we're still, we, we have, I apologize because I don't recall what has exactly happened since our last meeting, but we are continuing to be in touch with the, the county special projects director for the, the walking ramp and pedestrian bridges behind to understand better whether a change order can be put in to allow for greater privacy, just visual privacy. So people walking along or riding their bikes along on the walking ramp or pedestrian bridge can't automatically look into people's backyards. That is under consideration by the, the contractor who is in the process of putting together some quotes to determine what the cost is associated with this change order. Apparently those quotes are going to take two months, six weeks, two months. Do you remember?
Yes, she said it took two months. By the time that she asked for it, she's already prepared.
Okay. So we're about another month, five weeks away from hearing the quote. And then we'll be able to discuss as a council accordingly, whatever that, that might, what that might entail. On the Capitol Crescent Trail side, and, and Todd, please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong here, there's finally some sort of I don't know, acquiescence when it comes to the fact that the tunnel will not be built. The, the tunnel that was supposed to provide additional opportunities for pedestrian and bicyclist passage under Wisconsin. And as a result, the memorandum of understanding that we had, we being the town with the, the the county and the folks who are putting together the, the trail that can now move forward because they've been sitting on that for a while because it was supposed to be the tunnel, an MOU for the tunnel and the surface trail, but now it just needs to be the surface trail. We've since invited, or Todd has invited folks to, from Purple Line to come in to give a presentation to us on what's the latest design, when we're thinking about Elm Street improvements, you know, just to understand. I personally have questions about how two playgrounds, when you have such a high speed of, a, a, the high traffic amount of bicyclists coming through to, between two playgrounds, how safe that is, what are they, what are they thinking? That presentation will occur in July. Is that right? Yeah, the July meeting. But the, the purple line, who, I'm sorry, the, the, the purple line folks, and then it's about the design of this trail. Is that right? The purple? Whoever's doing the, the, whoever's in charge. Okay, MCDOT. Okay.
So would we not invite parks as well? Because do they not own the?
Irene and I discussed that. We would like to have somebody as a representative from the Parks Department be at that discussion as well.
So that'll be in July, the July meeting. Standing room only, I'm sure. Anything else on the purple line that I missed?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Any other topics for?
Talking about the S H A, two, two questions. One is any update on the crosswalk at the base of Maple?
No, no. See, but I can ping him.
Why do you think, yeah, ping them and get someone to respond. They were, we, we do recollect, we were supposed to see the plans in November and they would then be able to promptly start building the, put in the signalization this year. So where are they? The other one is the widening of Bradley close to Wisconsin to permit many more cars to be in the left turn lane heading south off Bradley. And I think we had been told that that was one, in fact, a high priority project that they wanted to put in place. So.
I will say, we, we probably will need a a presentation about that because I, I happen to speak with a resident on Bradley discussing other things and then happened to mention that, you know, this is a, a topic of, of high interest. And was told that, you know, don't be surprised if there are folks living in that part of town that do not want to have that portion of Bradley expanded. So that was a little bit of a surprise.
Where the expansion would be on
On the western.
On the western, or on the southern side.
That they would not want that.
Why would they not want that?
Because it would automatically encourage more traffic. It's like when you build a road and you expand a road, it ends up having more traffic. So there's a bit of a.
Yeah, I'm hearing, I'm hearing some of that too.
Okay. So I think we, we need to be mindful that however those conversations go and when they're ready and they have a design that we have to come back to our community.
Yeah.
And, and understand better what, what the concerns are.
I might put out there that I, I sit at that intersection almost every day, sometimes more than once a day. And I've often wondered if, to start with, changing the light signal pattern there would help. I have never understood why the left-hand arrow and the straight ahead green light as you are heading west on Bradley there at the intersection don't happen at the same time. Because the reason it gets backed up is that first there's the arrow. And it's only on for like 10 seconds. And if you're trying to turn left, but you're back in traffic.
Can't get there.
You can't get there. And I understand why they put those dividers in because people would get impatient and they would literally veer into the, right? But if they just had the arrow and the green light at the same time, I think it would be enormously helpful.
Okay.
That's a good point. That's something you could raise, Todd, is there? Look at the signalization and see if that can improve the problem or reduce the, reduce the problem.
Will do.
Thank you. Anything else? Rich, anything else? Okay. I believe we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you.